Good evening, everyone. Everyone. I'd like to call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, November 28th, 2018. It's seven o'clock. This is a special meeting. Could we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Carmichael.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp. Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bartel.
Here.
Commissioner LaVoy.
Here.
And Chairman Pill.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Having a quorum, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you gentlemen sit, if you could please, I need to swear you in tonight. So if you could raise your right hand and simply affirm with an "I do" that you swear that your testimony tonight will be the whole truth to help your God.
I do.
Thank you very much. And as you're seated, please silence any cell phones. And I would ask when you do approach the podium, if you haven't already, to please sign in. There's a sheet up there. And we'll try to have all discussions at the speaker's podium because we are televised, and that way it can be captured for all of our planning and zoning fans at home. We will not have minutes approved tonight. We'll do that at our next meeting. So, let's see. We'll begin with an open forum. Is there anyone who was here tonight to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? All righty. Seeing no one, I'll do a quick review of our procedures for tonight. I will introduce each item on the agenda in the order they're listed. Please approach the speaking area and sign in concurrently. I'll then open the public hearing. We invite the presenting team or individual to present the agenda item, explaining their item and addressing the findings of fact and any hardships as relevant. There's an overhead projector for all diagrams. If we do have a TV audience at home, there's also a laptop up there if needed. I'll then ask staff to address any comments. We'll then ask anyone from the public to speak. Everyone will have a chance. The applicant may address any of those concerns at my direction. Each commissioner will then offer comments and question the applicant or staff. There'll be a discussion among commissioners. After any discussion, I will then close the public hearing. At the conclusion of the discussion, I will call for a motion and a second on each agenda item. With a motion made and seconded, I will request final commissioner comments and will then proceed to vote, which will include findings of fact if applicable. The applicant will then be instructed on any next steps. All righty. So we'll proceed now to our open hearing. And the first item tonight, I would like to entertain a motion to begin this evening with new business as opposed to old business, to begin with new business. And so I will entertain a motion and a second for that, please.
Mr. Lue.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas and second by Commissioner Carmichael, was it? Commissioner Van Buren. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. Very good. All righty. So we will begin tonight with a new business, planning and zoning, item 18-020, the Village of Westmont regarding a zoning ordinance text amendment as follows. A, text amendment to section 7.03, permitted and special uses in business districts of the zoning ordinance to list video gaming cafes as a special use in the B2 general business district. And with that, I will open the public hearing on that. And I will ask Bruce if you would please speak and address this item.
Sure. And I'm still learning the microphone. It picks me up automatically. I don't have to push a button. So the first item on the agenda tonight is a proposed text amendment, as was just mentioned, to clarify that a permitted special use in the business district would be video gaming cafes, and specifically that they would be a special use in the B2 general business district. I'm just going to briefly read a couple of lines from the staff report that you all received. The Village of Westmont has allowed video gaming since December of 2012 in response to new regulations by the state of Illinois. And then at the bottom of that first paragraph, it states that there are currently 14 active establishments with video gaming terminals in Westmont. One of those is Dottie's, who is with us here tonight for another item on the agenda. This proposed text amendment, if you flip to the bottom of the second page, is basically to say, or to change the current situation, which is that the current zoning code limits video gaming terminals as an accessory use to allowed principal uses in the B1, B2, B3, C1, M, and the O-R zoning districts. However, video gaming cafes such as Dottie's, Penny's, Laura's, and others utilize video gaming as a principal use, and the zoning code currently has no provisions which allow video gaming cafes as a principal use. So what the current proposed zoning ordinance or text amendment would do would be to allow video gaming cafes as a principal use.
Great.
And to expand on that a little bit, when the village first allowed video gaming, it was intended for existing restaurants, restaurant bars with alcohol sales. It's a precondition that you have alcohol sales in order to have video gaming by state statute. Video gaming cafes came in and asked for liquor licenses and distributed menus and said they'd have food service, et cetera. And the village granted those, but subsequently determined that the food sales and beverage sales, to a certain extent, were pretty minimal at best. A lot of the food was prepackaged food, sandwiches, chips. They really didn't have full kitchens. It really was a small part of the business compared to video gaming, which was a primary, the primary component of the business. So while liquor licenses were originally issued to companies like Dottie's and other video gaming cafes under a restaurant classification, the village subsequently determined that was an error, and thus created this Class 22 liquor license for video gaming cafes, put a cap on them, and said, "We don't want any more video gaming cafes in town." This was really intended to serve existing restaurants. So here we are now with, and it's the next item on the agenda, a video gaming cafe who has been in town, has operated successfully, has not had any issues, wishes to relocate. And back when Joe Henrefind was here, informed Dottie's that we don't have a zoning provision that allows video gaming cafes as a permitted or special use in any zoning district, so you'd have to apply for some sort of zoning text amendment, and that's why we're here. Attached to your application materials is the proposed ordinance. It's really straightforward in that it just says, "Video gaming cafes are a special use." But it also has a special condition number 13, which says, "A special use may be permitted where it meets the definition of and restrictions upon video gaming cafes," as set forth, and it cites to the section of the Code of Ordinances that's a Class 22 liquor license. So there are a number of conditions there that a business needs to meet in order to qualify as a video gaming cafe and receive a liquor license. So if someone were to come in the future and ask for a special use permit, you'd look and see, okay, have they applied for their liquor license and received it, or are they going to, and do they meet these requirements? And I think the staff report also includes that Class 22 liquor license language. And it also mentions, I'm sorry, the special condition 13, where there is sufficient distance separation from other establishments in the village with which offer video gaming. And it doesn't set a fixed limit because, you know, there's some leeway, but it has been discussed extensively by the village board that they do not like the concept of clustering of video gaming operations within the village. They would not like to see, for example, a strip center with multiple video gaming establishments located there. So they have looked at distant separations when approving liquor licenses or, yeah, who want video gaming. And even a business that's not a video gaming cafe but a restaurant, not only must they have the underlying, let's say, Class 4 liquor license for a restaurant, but they must be operational for a year before they can apply for a separate liquor license that allows for video gaming for, like, restaurants or the Oakbrook Hotel, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you very much, John. Bruce, any other comments? Are you good? All right. At this time, I will ask anyone from the public who would like to speak on this subject. Seeing none, we'll go to commissioners, and I'll begin with Commissioner Bartel this evening.
Well, that was my question. Was there a distance separation established between these video gaming establishments? It sounds like that's not specific yet, but it's been discussed.
Well, once upon a time, there was a 500-foot separation requirement that was actually put into the zoning ordinance, and that was one way the village board wanted to control video gaming in town. They subsequently abandoned that and said, "We're going to take care of, we're going to regulate this a little more stringently through the liquor license process because every video gaming establishment does have to have a liquor, underlying liquor license." So they did away with the 500-foot separation requirement, in part because you have areas like downtown where they're a little more clustered potentially, so they didn't want a hard and fast rule that might be inequitable to apply or force people to apply for variances. So this wording, again, is just draft wording as to the special condition, and it's really, I think what our deputy liquor commissioner has done in the past is he's got a map of all the video gaming establishments within town, the distance between all of them, and has presented that to the village board so they could make a determination, you know, are they clustered? Are they within? And they've talked about 500 feet as an unwritten standard.
And each establishment is vetted individually as they apply for these? So you have that opportunity as well?
Correct.
Okay. No more questions, staff.
Thank you. Commissioner LaVoy.
I really only have one question, and it's only because of my ignorance, and I had this question, you know, about gaming, even though that I've been involved with projects that do gaming and all the security and everything else. But the question that I have is related to the ordinance. Let's just say hypothetically that the Village of Westmont becomes a home rule community. In a home rule community environment, is that subject to taxation or not?
Subject to taxation?
Yes.
No. What the village can do is impose a license fee on each terminal that goes in, and the state statute states what the license fee is. I think it's $25 per terminal. But home rule communities have the leeway to increase that license fee per terminal and have done so, and that issue's been litigated, and it was held to be within a home rule power to license them and charge a higher fee.
Is that something that this particular, you know, change in our ordinance with this text amendment, is there some additional language that we could put in there for that? For the person, people know that, you know, this could happen, or is it something that we do later on?
Well, I don't, that's never been discussed by the board. I think it's a hypothetical whether the village were to become home rule, but that is governed by the business license chapter of the Code of Ordinances, not the zoning chapter. So we already have a section in Chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances that says you need a license to have video gaming terminals, and here's the fee. And so that could be increased if the village were home rule.
Got it. Yeah, what I don't want to do is have an applicant come along and do this, and then something change at a later date, and, oh my God, this was never known. That was what I was trying to avoid, make sure that it's transparent that that could happen. That's the only question I have, though. Thank you.
Commissioner Carmichael.
Would you review the answer to that question, John?
Yeah, he was talking about whether...
I understand the question.
...taxation. The answer, no, I think that's regulated solely by the state, and the village receives a share of video gaming revenue from every establishment. And then what the village does have authority to do is license the individual gaming terminals and charge a fee for that, but it's set by state statute at $25 a terminal. So we can't collect any more fees than what the state's statute allows the village to collect. And that's kind of outside the purview of zoning anyhow.
And so that, well, the taxation, the home rule question notwithstanding, taxation, a community has no control over that, it's set by the state, those rates.
That is correct.
Thank you. And I have no, no questions.
Commissioner Van Buren.
I don't have any questions either. I understand why we're having this, and also I'm in agreement with it.
Commissioner Thomas.
The only question I had was, had to do with distance between establishments, and you answered that.
Okay. And I also have no questions. It's fairly clear and straightforward. So I will ask once again, anyone else have any further discussion or comments or questions? With that, I will close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning, item 18-020, the Village of Westmont, regarding a zoning ordinance text amendment as follows. A, a text amendment to section 7.03, permitted and special uses in business districts of the zoning ordinance to list video gaming cafes as a special use in the B2 general business district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Carmichael, second by Commissioner Bartel. Any comment or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pill?
Yes. All righty. Just for the record, Bruce, that will appear at the next village board meeting, and I'm sure you'll be representing that at that time.
I believe it's set for December 6th, yes.
Perfect. Perfect. All right. We'll now continue on to old business, planning and zoning, item 18-021, Illinois Cafe and Service Company, LLC, and 6601 South Cass Avenue, LLC, regarding the property located at 6601 South Cass Avenue, Westmont, for the following. A, a special use permit to operate a video gaming cafe in the B2 general business district. First thing I will do is I will call for a motion to reopen this particular item. We continued it at our last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner LaVoy, second by Commissioner Bartel. Any comment or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. All righty. We have a representative here. I will open the public hearing on this again. We've just voted to bring it back, and the speaker's area is yours, James.
Well, first I'll follow directions and sign in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me. I'll introduce myself. My name is James Lang. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Illinois Cafe and Service Company. You know us better as Dottie's. The reason that we have applied for this special use is pretty straightforward. We've been operating very successfully at 6188 Cass for five years. As you are well aware, you have a very exciting redevelopment opportunity roughly right about the area that we are operating today, hence the need to move. We've had a great relationship with Westmont. It's a very successful operation for us, which also obviously does mean revenue to the bottom line. I'm a former village manager, so I understand the bottom line. We believe that we have met everything, all the needs that a special use would require. And our attorney and Mr. Zemanek have been working together on all of the Ts that need to be crossed and Is that need to be dotted. I believe that we're there. We have also already submitted application for a new liquor license upon attorney recommendation as well as payment for that. Today, our project manager and our architect was in the site. I know that that is a pretty big question of how fast we could get going. We were there today to do measurements. Those will be turned over to our architect drawings. We hope to be able to submit drawings as early as a week from Friday. So we are taking the steps necessary, kind of proactively, knowing that this meeting was taking place this evening, and also knowing that, based on hopefully a positive recommendation from this forum, that it will also need to be voted on by the village council. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Can you just also address the, any hardships or anything that might be imposed if the move was not allowed?
And if I can maybe specify, since hardship really isn't a criteria for a special use, maybe speak to your operations at the new location, what the location involves, any impacts on surrounding properties?
Certainly. Impacts on the surrounding properties would be minimal. You're looking at a strip center, strip mall, however you want to, very similar to what we are in now. Hardship aside, we have to build it. You know, we're in an existing location. The location that we're moving to is, it was a former medical building or a medical unit, so it's not exactly set up turnkey operation. So it will be a 100% new build out, which also comes with the financial obligation to do that. We're basically moving down the street, and we believe that we've had a very successful relationship with the village, and that we would just like to continue that.
Okay. All right. Staff, is there anything you would like to offer? Comments, please?
I don't know if this made it into the packet. We were looking at it briefly before the meeting started, but it's a plan of the strip mall at 6601 South Cass, and it shows Unit M. And I'm going to pass this around so people know the unit that is being considered.
We did get this, yeah.
They sit the box. Oh, okay. Great. Thank you. Any other comments, Bruce?
My only other suggestion would be to go over with the applicant all of the criteria for a special use permit, and just make sure that all of the criteria are addressed to your satisfaction. So I think we started by going over impacts to adjacent businesses or surrounding community. You might want to just talk about some of the other criteria that are listed on the findings of fact sheet.
And certainly, and we put together a letter for Mr. Bork, where we, or Burke, I apologize, where we read 100% the ordinance, as well as to not, I believe, it's, "Our operation and maintenance of the proposed unit within the Falcon Plaza Shopping Center will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Not substantially diminish or impair property values within the existing neighborhood. And the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. And adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities are being provided. And adequate measures will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion on public streets. And the special use will conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission." So we are, we're very aware what to do and not to do.
And then you have draft findings of fact that take those standards and flush them out a little bit more, primarily based on the fact that there's an operating history with this applicant without any problems with police or loitering or impacts on surrounding properties, and the fact that the property that they are moving into is fully built out with access utilities, et cetera. They have an existing liquor license, and what the applicant is doing is simply applying for a relocation. So while it is a new liquor license, it's quite a simple process. There's not a background check, et cetera. It's simply they would like to relocate.
Yes, sir.
A question just for my own information. The condition of, or the requirement number 13 for the special use, was that in place previously, or is that new for these types of businesses?
That is new, based on the text amendment that was just recommended.
And if that's the case, it might be helpful just for all of our own education as we learn these new rules, to go through, it looks like, items A through F, if people would find that helpful?
A through F. You mean of the, oh, of the classification of licenses, yes. So I mentioned during the last agenda item that the Class 22 liquor license language was attached to your packet. It's the last page that lists the conditions, A through F, and, you know, it has a square footage limitation of 2,250 feet. The proposed new location is below that square foot maximum. They have to have some food sales, but it doesn't have to be a primary business, and the food does not have to be prepared on site. They have to be, have their operations conducted indoors, so no outdoor beer gardens, eating areas, et cetera. No other form of gaming is allowed, such as billiard starts, et cetera. Patrons cannot bring their own alcohol into the premises, and no more than two televisions are allowed on the premises, and that was to prevent big video gaming, sports bar, et cetera. That's one of the restrictions the board wanted. And, yeah, the applicant is aware of those conditions, as I understand it, and...
Yes, sir.
...is planning to comply.
Great. Anything else from staff or John?
No.
Great. All right. We will then open this up to the public. Is there anybody here from the public who would like to speak on this issue, either for or against? Seeing as we don't have an overflow crowd tonight, parking is not at a premium. We'll then move on to commissioner comments, and we'll begin with Commissioner LaVoy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I only have a couple of questions here. One is about the, maybe even the staff's first. Bruce, with this change of location, since we don't, I don't believe we have gaming necessarily in a use where it impacts parking, but this use that we have today that's open at their current location, is it any different than any other, anything else in that zoning district? And would there be a need for maybe a look at how many people are coming and going from this operation because it's primarily a gaming operation, and it isn't really covered anywhere else as far as, in other words, are they going to dominate the parking facilities here or not?
So let me just quickly refer to the staff report where it talks about the parking analysis. The zoning code does not specifically identify parking requirements for video gaming cafes.
Right.
Staff finds that the most similar type of use would be those listed under low-volume commercial businesses, and those require a lower parking ratio of one space for every 600 square feet of floor area, as opposed to the higher parking requirements typical of retail spaces and shopping centers. Staff's review of the existing center indicates that sufficient parking exists in the front and rear of the center to satisfy this use and the other existing uses in the shopping center.
Yeah, I get that. I got that report, but I'm asking you, like, with this being a primary business rather than a secondary, having, you know, in a gas station or whatever, having gaming inside of a gas station, well, the primary is gas, and, you know, we have a few machines inside, but this is different. So just want to make sure that we don't see a big fluctuation here with people coming and going all the time, you know, to the game.
And actually, Commissioner, I can, you just nailed it, coming and going. We are not, we are a destination point, but we're not a destination and stay point. The previous use was a medical facility, and whatever their parking numbers were, I guarantee I need about a third.
So you're going to be good?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And just to point out, at the existing video gaming cafe locations, or even the other establishments like restaurants that have video gaming, there's not been a reported problem to the village regarding parking.
I wish I had a problem with needing more parking spaces for our facilities.
I'm thinking more of in a global sense, that we don't really have this covered in an ordinance anywhere, and, you know, I don't really have a problem with your application at all. I'm just saying that it's new territory to...
Absolutely, sir. And I just, but we really are not a...
Perfect.
We have five machines. Even if they're all taken, that's five cars at a max. And our employees at all of our other facilities, you know, we have employee parking areas that are pointed out to us. We have, we have no guaranteed parking at any of our 44 locations. You know, it's all shared. It's all shared center parking. It'd be nice if I could have a nice little sign that said, "Dottie's only," but we just don't need it, sir.
Yeah. Okay. As far as security goes, and I know that even when you read the staff report, the As far as security goes, and I know that even when you read the staff report, the first thing that comes up is the police department and, you know, what they're feeling is, I did my own little thing on it because I have done some projects with gaming, but it's a very tight-run operation.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and it's something that I don't really see even independent, you know, view of this kind of thing. It's, there's really not a lot of issues with gaming as far as the police, you know, perspective.
Yes, sir.
So that's all good, but I do have to ask you, who handles the money?
Traditionally...
Who is it, third party?
This is, actually, it's a second party.
Second party.
Yes, sir. The state of Illinois made it very clear, I would equate it to the separation of church and state. We cannot own our machines. Dottie's, Illinois Cafe and Service Company, operating Dottie's. We have a terminal operator that, if you were to go into Dottie's right now, and God bless you, you win, and you go to cash out and something happens, we can't touch the cash machine, we can't touch the machine, machine, it goes down, and our terminal operator comes out. We have a safe, and there are certain statutes that the state puts out that how much money must be available based on potential winning, but it's a, it's a secondary operation.
It is totally separate.
Yes, sir. We have a terminal operator that is licensed by the state, that they own those machines, and they work in, you know, in tangent with us, but that, but they're their machines.
Their machines, and so there's no real excess of monies being stored at the location?
No, sir. No, sir.
That was really what I was getting to.
And if you hit it big, we'd have to call them to come out and bring that much money if you hit it big.
Well, that would be okay.
That would be a fantastic Christmas gift, yes, sir.
That would be okay. Hours of operation? I didn't see that, but I don't think it's a...
They're not gonna change, and I'd be lying to you if I told you I know what they are.
Yeah.
They're within the purview of the class twenty-two liquor license.
All right, I'm good. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Carmichael, please.
Mr. Lang, your petition states that since you're opening your doors on South Cass since 2014...
Yes, sir.
That Dottie's has contributed almost two-hundred thousand dollars to the village of Westmont.
Yes, sir.
But can you be specific on what you mean by that we're contributed? Is this all sales tax?
No, sir. It's the percentage, and, John, how do you pronounce your last name?
Zemanek.
Zemanek. I didn't want, thank you. No, as Mr. Zemanek alluded to earlier, there is a percentage set forth by the state that the village of Westmont receives, and that almost two-hundred thousand dollars is directly from the percentage that the village receives from our gaming operations.
Okay, so my mathematical mind wants to say four years, two-hundred thousand, fifty thousand a year. We have fourteen establishments in Westmont, I'm saying, seven-hundred thousand a year if everybody were...
Everyone is not equal, though. I would say, I would say, Commissioner Carmichael, that unfortunately or fortunately, depends on what side of the table you're sitting on, not all establishments are equal.
Of course.
You're gonna have James's Bar and Grill. Their primary focus is the Bar and Grill, and they have five machines in there. Their customers may or may not, may never go over to the machines. We are a primary video gaming cafe. Our numbers will probably look significantly larger than someone who is not in that primary line of business. But yes, sir, I'm not gonna stand here and lie or sugarcoat. We, this is a very successful operation for us in Westmont, and that's why we are petitioning for the special use to stay in Westmont, and I believe our customers will simply follow us down the street, so...
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
No further questions.
Commissioner Van Buren.
I don't have any questions, other than the comment that I noticed that we, this is already sprinkled, and so that's, in addition to meeting all the other requirements, that's important, too.
Yes, sir, and to us as well, and fortunately, we've been able, in all of our establishments, we haven't gone into something that hasn't been sprinkled, and if, I don't think we would even look at it, honestly, sir. The capital outlay is just too significant to risk over something like that.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
I know you said you, at your previous location, you had five machines. The number's going to stay the same in your new location?
Yes, sir.
Or do you see it, or do you see it increasing?
We would love to increase it, but we are tethered to the state law, and currently every establishment in Illinois can only have five machines. You were asking if I had a crystal ball, do I believe that will change in the next five years? I do. But again, we go into certain sized locations, and as Mr. Zemanek, you know, said, one of the seven criteria was under twenty-five hundred square feet. We are what we are, we don't want to be anything more than we're not. We have a successful business model, and we're happy with what we do.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Bartel?
I don't have any questions, but I'm very supportive.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great. And I, too, have had everything pretty much asked that I would have asked. I don't have any questions at this particular time. Anything else from staff? Village attorney?
No.
Any further comments from commissioners? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on this, and I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item one-eight dash zero-two-one, Illinois Cafe and Service Company, LLC, and sixty-six oh-one South Cass Avenue, LLC, regarding the property located at sixty-six oh-one South Cass Avenue in Westmont, for the following. A, a special use permit to operate a video gaming cafe in the B-two general business district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Carmichael. Any comments on the motion? Keep in mind that since we have a special use here, your vote will also correspond to the findings of fact for this particular one. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes.
Well, you have our recommendation. It was unanimous this evening, and we wish you luck with this. I believe that they'll contact you, but it sounds like you'll be on the next village board meeting, which will take place on a Thursday in early December.
Well, I just, first and foremost, thank you very much. This is obviously the first of its kind. This was something that we didn't foresee, but we've had a great relationship with the village, and we very much look forward to continuing that relationship, so, and that, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Same to you, and we look forward to continuing the relationship also. All right. Miscellaneous items. Do we have anything that staff would like to announce?
Well, I just wanted to let anyone watching at home know the date of that village board meeting. It'll be Thursday, December sixth. It's the only item I have.
Great. Our next planning and zoning meeting will be on Wednesday, December twelfth. I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving also, and I know that it was a nice, long weekend, and I also caution everybody with this unusual early snow and cold temperatures to watch out for the ice. I've seen numerous people slip and fall, and I've heard a lot of stories already, so caution everybody to be careful. Anything else from anybody?
You.
Yep. Uh, no, I probably won't. Great. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting stands adjourned.